...of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Public hearing tonight, update, order to comply, 87 Lake Street. I'll open the meeting up now for the public hearing. Anybody who wishes to address the board, name yourself.
Did you want to hear from my clients now, or do you have other people that have been addressing the board?
Emmer.
Okay. I'm Mark Schneider. I was here a month or two ago on behalf of the clerks. And I'm back again to discuss the situation. As you know, my clients have not finished the cleanup of that site because of the way that it was bulldozed and because of the way that evidence was destroyed. It has taken my clients a lot longer than they thought to separate out evidence. And we do have a civil action that is in the U.S. District Court. And as you know, the federal court maintained the civil rights action and refused to dismiss the case and has instructed my clients to bring a separate action in state court to determine the value of their property that's been taken. So it's just, we cannot, and I could go get a court order if I had to, but we can't just bulldoze that. We have to sort through it and find the evidence because we're trying to find the value of the personal property in there. My clients really will need a significant amount of time to do that correctly. In the alternative, they are willing at this point just to deed the property over to the town and let the town clean it up and let a court decide how much money they should be paid for the building. So we do present that alternative to you if you would like to take the property back. And we'll, you know, and you can go to court, which you will, and let a court decide how much, if any, you have to pay them for it. In addition, my clients at this point are not prepared to repair the standing structure. They're able to secure it and do that lawfully. The problem we've faced here is there was a three or four month delay in this because against the law, my clients were required to get an asbestos permit. And as you probably know, asbestos permit is required to take down a building, not to clean it up. And part of our federal lawsuit is that the town was the one that destroyed the building and took it down and not my clients. So really, that was a lot of the delay. But at this point, we would present you with those two options. Either one would be acceptable to my clients. However, if the town does decide to take over and clean it up, you do have an obligation to sort out and preserve the evidence. And we're willing to talk about this and work, discuss a way to do it that's fair to the town, that's fair to my clients. But those are the two alternatives that I see is that are reasonable and legal at this time.
Can you tell me who owns the property?
Yes, WWVI PDV corporation owns it.
Do they own it outright, or is there a mortgage against it?
There is no mortgage on it. There are some liens against it, judgment liens as opposed to mortgage liens.
You better check into that. Check into that.
There is how much?
Okay. I missed, there is a $30,000 mortgage in protest. Which I just learned about.
Kind of the same thing, if you're making your house payment and you haven't paid it, then you don't actually own it. Is that correct? Is that what it is?
No, no. You have a, if you own it, but somebody else has a lien on it. As opposed to a contract for sale where you don't own it until it's paid off.
Okay. The other question I have is, did your client have insurance at the time of the suspicious fire?
None.
Okay. So there was a lot of valuable stuff in there, but it was uninsured?
Correct.
When you say evidence, what evidence are you?
Well, there was, in the pleadings and also in the disclosure, we've set forth approximately a half million dollars worth of business and personal property. And part of your official position is some of that was destroyed in the fire. And so we are going through and sorting through the transmitters, the monitors, the TV cameras to show that they were not destroyed in the fire. They were on the second floor. And there is an issue of parts of the second floor and parts of the third floor being destroyed or not being destroyed. But the basic, the clerk's position is that if the town had not bulldozed their property the day of the fire, that they could have cleaned that out and then we could have reasonably determined how best to demolish the property or to restore it if possible.
If the stuff was so valuable though, I can't understand why we would wait so long, months have gone by, to get in there and sort through that valuable property that was uninsured in the property.
My clients were not allowed to by Dakota officer, even though in our investigations of law, we determined that you don't need to have asbestos permit. But my clients were threatened with legal action if they went in there before they went, before we came to you last time and did receive a permit. And it turns out that there was a lot of other debris put on there, gravel, and it's been a very difficult and hard process to do and sort it out. But I think we need to go forward from here. And again, the town can, if you want to take the property and clean it up and perform the legal function of separating out evidence, you can do that. But for us to do it is going to, obviously today is the day and there's still a huge pile there and it is unsightly. And my clients are not happy with that either. They would have rather have started earlier and done that. They were not allowed to go in there until we were here last time.
Well, I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, we're getting a lot of feedback from the village residents. So of course, being on the board, the health and the safety of the village residents must be paramount at all times. So that's the biggest thing right there. And then numerous health and safety violations on the piece of property make this decision a very easy one. It's a problem, it's a mess, it looks awful, it's dangerous, it's got to be removed. You know, you can't sit on it.
Well, again, you can, if you believe, we don't have the resources to do it any faster at this point and still preserve the evidence. If the town tries to go in there or wants to go in and have somebody just bulldoze it up, I think the federal court would stop that because there is evidence in there and it has to be done in a very considerate way to preserve the evidence. And remember that my clients are not the ones who bulldozed this. And certainly, the fire was very unfortunate and my clients, more than anybody, have suffered from that. And the town has suffered too, and it is unsightly to be there. So I think we need to work together.
I've got a couple more comments. But first of all, this is not a game between you and your client. I mean, it's not a shell game. And that's kind of what you guys are doing. Hide the garbage, stick it in the back. It's supposed to be removed, and you haven't removed it. You know, we've wasted a lot of time, time and energy and fighting over it. It's a really, it's a simple issue. I mean, it's, we've been more than fair with you guys and we aren't picking at you guys. And for some reason, you think we're picking at you, but we aren't.
Keep throwing the building down, Gary.
Okay. Wait a minute, hold it, hold it. One at a time, please. I think I have four, so I'll just, I have just a couple more comments. Okay. It's clear you violated our rights because it's the environment and everything, it's dangerous. I mean, it's not, it's not, that's not funny. You know, you think that's funny.
We didn't tear it down.
Okay. All right. Okay, just got a couple more. You've got big plans and you've got a lot of talk of what you're going to do and it looks to me like you've got little capital to proceed with your luxury townhouse. Like, I mean, it's not even believable what you told us here.
Neither is the train station.
Okay, I'm not done. When I'm done, you can talk. Okay. The property really reminds me of ground zero, the way it is. I mean, it's, it's full of toxic waste, it's full of dead pigeons, and it's in a rubble everywhere. I mean, it's, it's really an awful thing. It's dangerous. That's the biggest point. That's why we're on your case. And it's going to be torn down one way or the other. I mean, either get with us and work with us or we're going to, we're going to tear it down one way or the other. So if you're unwilling, you're unable, no, that's too bad, but that's just the way it's going to be. You know, I don't know what your position is at that. How could you stand to look around and stuff? People tell me it's dangerous to breathe in that stuff and you want to leave it there, preserve evidence? Doesn't, that doesn't, I don't believe that.
Let me just respond very briefly. It's not, it has not been determined to be toxic. The state, they go, or we had an engineer go in and look at it. Secondly, actually, the town, the village could be liable for sending in a private person on a bulldozer into a site before they knew that it wasn't toxic. It turns out there is no asbestos in there, thank God. But it's the labor laws that want to prevent workmen and public from asbestos. And there is no asbestos in there. So that is the most serious toxic material. And I don't know of any other seriously toxic materials that are...
Above the thousands of dead pigeons that are in there. That's what the smell is from.
I, I don't, I'm, I'm not aware of the dead.
And the tanks, the propane tanks that are laying around there?
I mean, I'm not, I'm not...
Well, I went there today to make sure of that, you know.
But we are, if, if the village is not willing to extend to my clients the right to clean it up, and they are separating out salvage in the back, they are not playing a shell game, they're saving brick, that's what they tell me, I haven't been back there to inspect it. But let me just finish, that we're willing to deed it over to the village and have you take on the cost of cleaning it up and preserving the evidence. Because we cannot do it by tomorrow, obviously. So those are, you know, I think those are two big jumping off points for discussion on what to do rather than blame. Because I can, I can sit and blame the village also, but I'm not going to, if we want to start going tit for tat, I could do that, but I'm saying, I did that in court last week, but I'm not going to do that. I'm here to talk to you on behalf of my clients, what's the best way to get rid of this mess and determine, we can determine damages and costs later in court.
All right, John.
I had a question, Mr. Stein. And I guess the village will eventually end up cleaning the property. I think that's the forgiven, you know, that's probably a given at this point.
Well, no.
I mean, with, as long as, you know, if you're in compliance and you want us to clean the property, which you said you do, do I understand you're going to deed it over to the village?
Well, if we can get more time for them to do it.
Right. But I guess the question is, you say there's evidence in the property.
Yes.
Now, how are we supposed to determine what is evidence and what is not? Does that mean that we have to have the clerks there and tell us daily what every scoop that comes out, so we have to strain it? I mean, and even if we do find some kind of a monitor that may have been in the fire one night, how do we know that it was worth anything to begin with? You know, I mean, I had a lot of monitors and video equipment that sit at my house that are not functioning. How could we prove that before the fire that they were functioning?
These are very good issues and that's why I went to law school and why Tom went to law school is to figure out ways of dealing with presumptions and experts and people looking at it. Or we could have stipulations or agreements, I suppose, between the lawyers on that. But right now, we've been asked by your attorneys to prove the value of what was destroyed, to prove what was destroyed in the fire and what was destroyed by the bulldozer. I mean, we need evidence for that. I mean, we can agree, we can make agreements about that, I suppose, based on what we have. We have pulled out transmitters, monitors, tape machines that are not, that were not finding damage. So I guess if the village is willing to punt and say, well, stiff that this, this equipment was destroyed when the building was torn down, then we could, then we won't have to preserve evidence. Otherwise, we're going to have to find the cassettes and this valuable, valuable equipment.
How can it be valuable and not sure, Dylan? It just doesn't make sense. That's the point.
My, my clients, the insurance was very high and it was, it was a risk and it was not a, it turned out...
Well, it was considered a vacant villa, a building by the village. There's standing orders over in the village file for us that to let the building burn and just, just save the surrounding property. So with that kind of information already in the, in the village files, we couldn't get any insurance on that. We weren't in there day to day, you know, living in there. And, you know, we tried, but I think we're the only property in town who has a standing order in there not to go in and save it.
Would you like to go in and help me fight a fire, sir?
If I had to, yes. If I thought there was somebody in there, you're darn right I would.
I think there's a...
I think it's anybody's duty to save somebody.
I guess my biggest question is, yes, I'm sure that we're going to end up cleaning the building. I just don't, I don't, where the evidence, and that's probably something that you'll have to argue with Mr. Murnay. But how, how can we, I mean, expeditiously clean the building as it is? You know, I mean, you're talking about separating, separating everything, you know, the things that...
Well, they, there are things, there are parts of the building that did not have TV equipment. There are certain discreet areas that were studios, where equipment was stored, and in fact, that's what they've been doing, is cleaning out, they've been going to those areas first. There may be large portions of the debris that Gary and Susan could tell you could be just picked up and cleaned. Or maybe the way they've been doing it is picking it off the top and essentially sifting it out, looking for what they know. But remember, everything was bulldozed around, even after it was down, the village came back in and pushed it around again. So it is very difficult. And I'm willing, my clients are willing, to talk to your attorneys and figure out a way where we could come to some agreements based on what we have so far, I suppose.
You mean some kind of settlement?
Well, first of all, we are always, my clients, at this point, where we stand right now, I'm sure there's a way to resolve this without further litigation and just to end it. And I don't, I say you're shaking your head and obvi, so, sort of that...
Well, I guess my question is, what is your, what is your proposal?
We don't have one. We don't have one right this minute, but if we could make a proposal to globally resolve this dispute. And if that's what you're asking, I mean, we're here in public.
I mean, you don't have any idea what your proposal would be?
There may be, there, I'm sure there's a low...
You've already shot it down, though.
Yeah, I'm sure there's a low ball amount that would be fair in light of what we're going to go through in federal court. And I'm pretty sure, and your lawyer may disagree with me, that I'm liable, that there's going to be liability and the issue is going to be what the damages were. And you may have defenses, I don't know about it. Again, I, I will find out and talk to you later. But yeah, I mean, we can try to globally resolve this. My clients could come forth with a, a way to resolve it and just move forward.
Wasn't mostly equipment destroyed in the part that was on fire?
No. That's not what I believe. I believe most of the equipment was destroyed by being bulldozed. So far, we have not found equipment. Again, now you're, now you're...
Most of the equipment was down in the lobby. We were preparing to move the business out of there and that's one of the reasons we weren't there day to day. We were operating out of, out of Plattsburgh up in Ran Hill. And all the equipment, we were preparing for another business, it was all sitting in the lobby. We were trying to get it out of, it was all being stored.
This is the gist of why we need to preserve the evidence, because what they've found so far was not in the fire. Where they had it was not in the fire. But the parts, it was mostly the third and fourth floor that burned and a few parts of the second floor. As far as we know...
Everything collapsed into the lobby, though. Everything collapsed into the lobby.
We found items, in the very front, we found items from the third floor that haven't burned at all, let alone, let alone the second floor. So that, that was all smashed in and it took, it took the excavation guys five hours to get that stuff demolished. It shows you how much was there. I mean, if the building was coming down, it was just walls, it would have taken an hour.
This is why we have a venture issue is to show this and this is the dispute that we're having. And again, we're willing, I'm willing to come, talk to my clients and come forth with a, with a reasonable offer to resolve the whole thing. If that's something you want, I can, I, we have, I have not had this discussion with your attorneys because we just last week found out that the case is going forward in federal court. But again, as far as what's going to happen tomorrow, my clients are willing to proceed a pace and sort through it. That's going to take a while, it may not be as fast as you want. So if you think, one is, we can go to court and fight about it, but we can, we can agree to give you the property and let you have it and clean it up as you see fit and preserve the evidence.
Well, I guess that goes back to, you're giving us the property, you want us to preserve the evidence.
Yes.
But it still doesn't, I don't know how we can, how do we logistically do this?
My clients will cooperate.
We'll be on site.
That they will cooperate.
Take a clip or count the number of bricks that we could pull out of piles to deal faster.
But I mean, the evident, it's still, you know, have fire in the building. And this is something interesting.
Don't look at me like that, Gary. You screwed us over, now you're trying to screw the village.
Please, 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 please. I don't, I don't want to, you know, contest here. Please.
Well, we're trying to, we're trying to be fair to everybody, but in, in the long run, the, the property is heavily mortgaged. The property is also, there's many judgments against the property.
How, are there, what, there are two as far as the...
A few.
I don't know. You've done a search.
I did.
You know more than I do.
I had a conversation with Gary last Thursday or Friday. It was a pretty lengthy discussion and just trying to say, how can we do this to please both parties? So, and I wanted to make sure, I, I knew what I was talking about when I came to the board meeting. So I did go down to the county clerk's office and I looked to see how many leads or judgments there are against the property.
How much did it, how much did it...
Well, I, I don't want to be quoted for the exact amount, but there are probably five or six different clients, plus there's a mortgage. And then there's also, there's some kind of promissory note of 400 and some thousand or whatever that occurred in 2003.
Doesn't have anything to do with the property?
That's not really on the property. But anyway, it's again, whatever. But I was just trying to figure out how, how, even if we as a village end up cleaning this thing, we stand in line with the rest of the people for the judgment. If, if we end up spending, it's going to cost us 40 to 50 or 30 anyways. I mean, Gary even said that he went and tried to get somebody to come in with an excavator and clean the place. Said it was very expensive. And he probably knows that the, probably went around and got the best cost. But, you know, and in the end, it still doesn't give us, even if we found a monitor, it doesn't tell us whether or not that monitor was working before the fire. It could have been, it could have been, I, you know, people sometimes have this tendency to pick up things that necessarily don't work, but because they're in electronics, at one day, they're going to repair them. Now, we don't know, I mean, when you secure evidence, I would assume, I know in criminal cases, when you, you take evidence, you have to be there from the day that the, you know, if you're claiming that there was evidence there, you have to have that building secured from the time that you take, that you proclaim that there's evidence there until the time that you, you pick the evidence up. Now, we've been sitting here six months. Now, from the time of the fire to this day, someone could have brought other pieces of property that weren't at the building. So how are we ever going to know that? So I would say, my suggestion is that since we cannot prove, with little knowledge that I have, that we can't prove where the evidence was there before or is there now and there's a six-month time lag, why don't we just agree on picking up the property, cleaning it up, getting rid of the, the problem that might have happened? If you do have a lawsuit, the lawsuit is going to start from the day the fire was commenced and at the time of that occurrence. And if the federal judge or the state judge decides that we in the village were in error, we're going to be ending up paying the client. So my, my suggestion would be to clean up the property without interference and then proceed from there.
We could do that. We have evidence, we have evidence of what was in there before. We have receipts, we have other ways to show what kind of property the station owned. We have pulled some stuff out. I think we could probably work out a stipulation.
But I don't think we're...
We're arguing this.
I don't think that, I mean, I'm sure that Mr. Murnay and whoever will represent the village would argue the point that that property could have been placed there after the fire.
You can argue that.
I have a question.
I'm taking pictures.
Pardon?
We took pictures as it was sitting under the debris. We have a lot of pictures.
Well, and you know, and the thing is, we want to be fair and just, but I think that don't you all agree that we should clean the property up? I mean, that's the big thing.
We can agree on anything.
You know, and I think if we can move past that, then we'll go on to the lawsuit and let the, yourself and, and our bill, our attorneys, you know, argue in court. But at, at this point, I don't see...
You will talk to your attorneys and, you know, have privileged conversations with your attorneys and you can come up with a plan on that. We are, on behalf of the clerks, we're willing to make stipulations or whatever regarding the evidence to try to expedite the cleanup. And having thought about how to do it, I'm sure we can. And so if that's your desire, then I'll talk to my clients also, based on what we've taken out so far. There are all kinds of presumptions and rules, but I think we can, we can work around that if that's your desire.
Glenn. Actually, it's two questions. One, I just want to make a point that because of the water damage alone, electrical equipment, essentially put water on that, you know, so that kind of eliminates, you know, you put water on a VCR or a satellite, you should eliminate that. So that is a big, you know, because of the fire department.
That's a good point. These are all good points and these are the kind of things we fight about in front of judges and have to work out and have experts and all that. And we're not here to, I'm not an expert on that either. We will have experts, you will have experts and we'll be talking to judges about it.
What other question? You'd like to sign the property over to the village? Is that the way it is?
Well, that's one option, if you're not willing to let the clerk proceed.
If he doesn't own the property outright, I don't believe he can do that.
Well, he can sign over his interest. It would, I mean, obviously...
And that way we would be responsible for all the debts?
If you wanted to, you would have...
My lawyer's saying yes. I don't think that's a viable solution.
Well, it depends. You own it, you could not sell it.
You want it subject to whatever mortgages?
Right, that's right.
Judgments, liens, encumbrances?
Right.
Or again, unpaid taxes, whatever. If you'd be open on that property, that's what you'd be taking it subject to. Which means that essentially, before you could dispose of it or do anything with it, you'd have to somehow work out arrangements to somehow dispose of those, those particular items, which property probably would not, and I don't know what the value of the property is, we have, you know, there's an appraisal on it as far as I know, but those vacant lots or one vacant lot that's there, I don't think would probably bring the village an amount that would satisfy the mortgage judgments and/or the cost that would be incurred to clean up the property. And that's a total estimate on my part, but I'm thinking that's probably...
Is the second one mortgage also? Does anybody else want to address the public hearing, please? I think we've, the board has done what they want. Is there anybody else out there? If not, then I will close the public hearing. I'm sorry.
All right. I just want to bring up the issue about debris on sidewalks, because it is getting for the winter with the snow plowing.
Go ahead.
Yeah. With all the debris that's on the sidewalk that they're leaving on the side of the road with the snow plows, we're afraid it's going to cause damage or allow somebody to get hurt, lost?
Yeah, we're, we're going to remove that. Try and get it out tomorrow. Clear the sidewalks tomorrow, yeah.
Thank you. Did you hear what you said, right? You said you're going to have it out tomorrow.
They'll take it out tomorrow.
Nobody else at this time? I will close the public hearing. Okay, it's a comment from the public at this time unless the board has anything else. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm sorry. I was looking the other way.
Tom, I'm at Montgomery Street. I have anything to say about this? Just I'm glad that I'm not sitting up there with you guys. No, my, my concerns here are regarding newspaper article I read last week, a comment... No, my concerns here are regarding newspaper article I read last week, a comment by the board regarding the tank down at the village Vietnam Veterans Park. And the quote was, "We wish to get rid of the tank and we'd like to make a nice new park for all veterans." And I take exception to this for a couple of reasons. First, the Vietnam Veterans Park was created and designed to honor Vietnam War veterans. It was noted that the 1927 flagpole down at the library was designed to honor veterans from the Revolutionary War through World War I. The World War II naval cannon right outside here was dedicated to World War II veterans. And the Rousas Point Bridge to Vermont was dedicated to Korean War veterans. So, that left Vietnam veterans as the most recent war at that time that hadn't been anything designated to. Now, take this dedicated park away from those, the most malign group of veterans would be a further slap in their face, I believe. And I don't think that should ever happen. Secondly, I've noted an alarming trend in the village, not a big trend, but a little trend, in recent years to undo what past boards have done. High-quality ornamental streetlights from the O'Neill administration were replaced with different style lights of a cheaper quality. Village entry signs, the first that were up in years and years in this village, unfortunately uncompleted because they were supposed to have had stone columns and planters added in 1998, were recently replaced with smaller signs. They're nice signs, I'll grant you, but it's undoing something that was done before. I submit that this board needs to focus on identifying its own projects and completing them and paying for them before they undo the work of others. Now, returning to the army tank for a moment. The acquisition of that tank represented the work of several veterans organizations. It is enjoyed by many people. Parents bring their kids there to play on it, veterans stand there and get their pictures taken next to it. I watched this all summer long. There's a lot of people that enjoy looking at that tank and playing around with it. And it's the same thing with the naval gun out in front here. The tradition of displaying military ordinance goes back over a hundred years when the G A R acquired Civil War cannons to memorialize veterans of that war. Rousas Point had two Civil War cannons, as did Champlain, Moors, and Cumberland Head. Unfortunately, village leaders lacking historical comprehension allowed those cannons to be scrapped. Five thousand other towns across the country kept theirs. This, thus began the tradition of historical disdain in Rousas Point where everything of historic value was dismissed. Fort Montgomery, the railroad yard, like for instance, why was no locomotive or caboose preserved when there was hundreds of them here in this town at one time? Historic buildings either through neglect or fires or destruction via modernization. Old fire trucks, a museum, anything. It's no wonder the waterfront committee is having such a tough time trying to make something out of nothing. I hope a future board won't come along and undo their significant accomplishments because I know how much work has gone into that street and what's ongoing. I've visited most of the communities in New England, literally and systematically. Nearly all of our size or larger have some focal point, some noteworthy edifice in our community. Prior to the creation of Montgomery Street Park, which we know used to be more or less the village dome for construction debris and the sand pile, all we had in Rous, was Rouse Park with a W C T U drinking fountain. No wonder people didn't slow down when they passed through town. Now, I'm not saying that the tank by and of itself is a destination object for people to come and look at our tank. As a footnote, as a longtime resident of Montgomery Street, I'm opposed to a parking lot being built in the Vietnam Veterans Park. There's adequate parking at the boat ramp area for the new boardwalk. A parking lot in the park will merely be misused by the Marina patrons as it was in the past, and we had a big issue with that about twenty years ago when I was on the board before. Right now, they're enroaching in the park as it is, and I think it's just gonna make it worse if you designate a parking lot because it won't be used by the people that you want it to be used by. And that's all I have, though. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom.
Are we, are you gonna make a decision or you'll let us know what you decide?
I believe there will be a decision made here tonight.
Will be made here tonight?
I'm not, I think so.
Do we have a resolution?
Anybody else wish you would have stuck the board to the public hearing? If not, I will close it at this time. Carol, you wanna read that resolution, please?
Whereas a notice pursuant to section seventy-two fifteen of the code of the village of Rousas Point was issued on August twenty-second, two thousand and six to Gary and Susan Clark, owners of the property located at eighty-seven Lake Street. And whereas on October second, two thousand and six, a public hearing was held to seek compliance under Article seven of the village code. And whereas on November sixth, two thousand and six, a further public hearing was held regarding an update on the progress of the removal of debris and the securing and restoration of the remaining structure of eighty-seven Lake Street. And whereas the board passed a motion made on December fourth, two thousand and six, the last day for Gary and Susan Clark, to comply with the removal of the debris, securing the remaining building, and submitting a plan to the code enforcement officer for the renovation and restoration of the existing building at eighty-seven Lake Street. And whereas, as of December fourth, two thousand and six, Gary and Susan Clark, the owners of the property located at eighty-seven Lake Street, have failed to comply with the order to remove the debris, secure the remaining structure, and to submit a plan for the renovation and restoration of the existing structure as required by the board in its motion made at the public hearing held on November sixth, two thousand and six, and as defined in the August twenty-second, two thousand and six, ordered to comply. And therefore, be it resolved, the board trustees of the village of Rousas Point will provide for the removal of debris from the demolition of the existing building by contract as outlined in section seventy-eight seventeen of the village code. This resolution shall take effect immediately before the board was approved by, you need a motion?
I need a motion.
I'll make that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
This motion. In that, I want you to do your fifth paragraph down, Carol. Okay. It's the second sentence from the bottom. Submit a plan for the renovation slash restoration of the existing structure as required by the board in its motion made at the public hearing held on November sixth, two thousand and six. That was our motion to set this date. Okay, all right. There's just a question about the date. I just have one thing. I think that we need to follow up on Brian's comment about the sidewalk, so we can do it after the vote of this, but let's not forget to do that.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Burks.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
I do think in light of what Brian had to say, that the sidewalk is a definite concern, and I do think we need to set a time and a date by which the debris that has been placed on the sidewalk is removed. And then it's again secured so that no other debris will fall into or onto the sidewalk.
That's by four o'clock tomorrow afternoon. Is that timing up, board?
Yeah, Mr. Clark said he was gonna remove it tomorrow.
Just for clarification, are you ordering my clients to stop their cleanup and let you do it? Or is there, are you gonna put this out for bids and have somebody else come forth?
That's the next thing.
And, okay, well, how long is it, when do you anticipate having somebody there?
I would say, if we could get it advertised, we'll probably hold a special meeting to award a bid next week, and it will be immediately afterwards. Can't? That's what I needed to know.
It would be before Christmas, so, a hundred percent of the amount.
We'll try. I can't guarantee, I can't figure it exactly. I have to do part of the discussion. Tom, it, my understanding is that it would be appropriate for us to set a time by which the debris should be removed from the sidewalk and replaced there as a safety concern?
Correct. There is a section of the village code dealing with sidewalks and the fact that responsibility of the property owner and/or the person in possession of that property to keep the sidewalks clean, free of debris. There's actually two separate sections of the village code. One dealing with that provision, but I think as far as easily maintaining them or snow removal and things of that nature, the other provision actually does make it somewhat of a violation to have debris or to make sidewalks unsafe in front of property that's owned by a particular individual or possessed by a particular individual.
It's a huge safety issue too, when you wouldn't wanna see another lawsuit during the building, right?
So, is tomorrow at four o'clock an appropriate timeline?
If the clerks say that they can have that debris removed by that date, I would say that's an appropriate date. Again, the village code doesn't say, it says it's a violation technically, you don't do it. So, I mean, we're just essentially tonight discussing it and we just replace Mr. and Mrs. Clark on notice, that's an issue, and we'd like to have a remedy.
My clients intend to keep on cleaning and sorting, and meanwhile, we'll probably go to federal court and see if they can dump it.
I find, sir?
We were talking about the sidewalks.
No, no, the sidewalks, the clerks are gonna keep on until somebody comes in and supersedes them, and if you wanna talk to me more about some evidentiary issue, otherwise we're gonna have to preserve that evidence, and I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Well, the resolution was passed, we're talking, we're discussing the provision with sidewalks.
Sidewalks are, they're gonna clean it.
We're talking about a time, talking about a timeframe.
As soon as they can. As soon as they can. Because if they can't get it done, then we'll bring the village crew and clean it all right out before the end of the day. That's okay. Do you have any objection to that? Do you wanna let them do the sidewalk?
No, because they took all the debris that last winter and shoved it on the property and it's gone again.
What are we supposed to do with that? Your debris.
The sidewalk wasn't. The street sweeper after the fire. You dug up the sidewalk. Montgomery Street, and he took the dirt and piled it onto our pile. I pulled, the night of the fire, there was a filing cabinet full of papers and files. I tried to pull it out of the pile. The workers said, get on the other side of the yellow tape, you can't be within the boundary. Then he immediately took his plow, filled it with dirt, and dumped it on top of the filing cabinet and knocked it over and buried it.
Yeah, but the debris we're talking about, those piles that came from the property. Okay, that's all we're asking. Just the brick and, we talked about this, Gary, you said you removed the brick. That's all we're asking, the brick and those piles, then you have them on the roof, that's a, rest of the car.
Yeah, we didn't see that as a federal case.
Okay, they'll keep on working.
Appreciate that.
Okay, reading of the minutes of, moving of the minutes of the last regular meeting, no feedback, come on in. You all have copies, is there any additional stipulations?
Page five, Carol. Throw in that name. The name in the middle of page five. Should read McManus.
I never saw that either. Gotcha, good one.
You see what I'm saying, Carol? The heading, says Melissa Peck.
Why is it nine?
She was.
You could've added McManus out of here.
And then, page six?
Wait, you said anything?
Uh, the under-executive session, no action was taken during executive session regarding, it wasn't public works personnel, it was the labor contract negotiations. Okay. Okay, yeah. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burks. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried, bills?
No additions to the reasons.
Thank you, correspondent.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills tonight.
Second.
Move by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor will by your side of the aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Correspondents?
I only have one letter from Jason Andrew, the director of Norbitmar, the board and members of the village of Rousas Point, on behalf of Norbitmar and the village of Rousas Point, Champlain Historical Society. I would like to submit this request to reserve the civic center from July twenty-seventh to August seventeenth, two thousand and seven. During this time, the civic center will be used as a venue for the Summer Conservatory two thousand and seven and the Fourth Annual Summer Dance Concert at the Dons, two thousand and seven. That the Dons, two thousand and seven, will continue to function as a benefit dance concert for the Rousas Point Historical Society. We feel that these events will continue to bring vitality and excitement to our village. Considering Jason Andrew.
The only correspondence?
I'll make a motion to allow the Norbitmar presentation to use the civic center for the three weeks in the summer.
Second.
Motion by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Penfield. Any discussion?
Yeah, is it available? You go check the mic first before.
Yeah.
Make sure it's available.
We'll record that later. We've got time to discuss that. Discuss with Mike, we just get, I can just, wait, four away.
So, we'll, we'll do their use, we'll talk to Mike, everything?
Yeah, talk to Mike.
Should we talk to Mike and then do this next week, for next time?
I don't think there's a problem.
No, there's no, there's no scheduling problem there.
The only thing is, if we intend to let them know, we should probably have an idea of the speed of the time.
We'll talk to Mike.
Okay, talk to Mike about that, okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Report of the mayor and the board of trustees, and first of all, we have a special guest here tonight, I'd like to introduce Mr. Moore, who has to do a paper for his college, for college, local government. I happen to know his mother quite well, she was my secretary at work, so it's nice to have him here. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I want to get authorization for the winter N I COM legislative meeting on February twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh. And I'm not looking at this time for anybody that wants to go, it's really too early. What we're trying to do is get authorization, just a number for people to go, so that when the reservations come out, we can get into the hotel, because it ends up if we don't do it early, we're in no outside hotels and it's not, no fun to do it that way.
What's the date?
Twenty-fifth, Sunday the twenty-fifth through Tuesday the twenty-seventh of February.
What will it be in Albany?
Albany, Crumplaza. So, anybody thinking about going, that's all I want is approval for the clerk to make reservations when they come out, and we'll have time to discuss it then.
You want a motion?
Yes, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to allow two people to go to the N I COM meeting, the twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh of February, two thousand and seven, in Albany.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Burks. Is there any other discussion? There being all discussion, all of the favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried. Next thing on my agenda, sure, agenda, is the Secretary of State Grant Award Presentation, December twelfth at eleven a.m. here at Househead Hall. The Secretary of State will be here on the twelfth of December to give us our tail-end grant on the waterfront. And we're gonna have a little reception here, and there will be several invited guests at eleven o'clock on the twelfth. And next thing on my agenda is requesting executive session pending real estate transaction.
Okay.
Okay, seconded, moved by the mayor, seconded by trustee Moore. Roll call, vote. Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Burks.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye. And that's it for me, trustee Jefferson.
Okay, we have a resolution tonight for the adoption of. Okay, we have a resolution tonight for the adoption of the Clinton County Pre-Disaster Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And, uh, basically what it is, the Village of Rouse's Point, with the assistance from Clinton County and the friends of North Country, have gathered information and prepared the Clinton County Pre-Disaster Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. And, uh, basically, the Clinton County Pre-Disaster Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan is prepared in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of two thousand, whereas the Village of Rouse's Point is a local unit of government that has afforded the citizens an opportunity to comment and provide input in the plan and the actions. Whereas the Village of Rouse's Point has reviewed the plan and affirms that the plan will be updated no less than every five years. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Rouse's Point hereby adopts the Clinton County Pre-Disaster Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan as this jurisdiction's natural hazard mitigation plan, and resolves to execute the actions of the plan. And basically to allow us to get money, uh, the approval of the governing, the governing body is important because the Disaster Mitigation Act requires all local governments to have an improved mitigation plan in place to be eligible to receive Hazard Mitigation Grant Program project funding. So I'll put that in the form of a motion, second.
Moved by trustee Jefferson, seconded by trustee Moore, uh, this is a roll call vote, trustee Jefferson.
Wait, I have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I will admit that I have not read the plan. But what, what types of things are in it? I understand what you're saying about the funding, but is it our response to a hazard, a natural disaster flood?
It's on the filing cabinet.
I know, but I haven't.
Can you take a look at it? You'll see absolutely nothing in it for the Village of Rouse's Point.
So nothing that pertains to it?
No, it's, if we have a natural disaster.
We're, we're out of the flood zone, so we don't have that. The only thing that is said is possible tornado.
What about a disaster in the river?
Doesn't include any of that. It's a natural, natural disaster. It's all natural. Flood, wind.
What about wind? Wind, are we getting in from wind?
Ice storm.
Ice storm, it, but it's not in there, believe it or not. I read the plan today, that's why I said, there's no reason why we can't have it.
It's only one. Great big binder.
Great big binder.
In the filing cabinet.
A great big binder, and it includes the whole county.
So basically, we're just giving our support to the plan?
That's right. Absolutely right.
Now that we understand it, we support it.
Did anyone from the village sit on the committee that put together?
I, I, I sat at that, Brian sat in the sessions.
Anything with fires, Brian?
No. It's not natural. That's what it says.
Suspicious fire would be.
I don't want to go there.
About lightning.
Yeah, lightning fire.
Not there.
What if there then?
I told you, flood, it's a whole county plan, right?
But a flood from the lake, not flood from excessive rain?
There is something in there about that.
Because that happened to us.
Yeah, there is, and there is a section on that.
Well, there we go, we got something from Rouse's Point, all right.
Let me just tell you this, as I was hearing, in the recent past, this grant funding assisted Clinton County and several, several local communities recovered from the losses incurred by the floods.
There was a lot of money given, there was other talent, you know, who cares, absolutely zero.
Well, I get, we'll just need it, we'll just need moral support, I got the other thing. Okay.
All right, trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Mertz.
Aye.
You voted for me, thank you. I voted aye. And that's all I have on my agenda tonight. Thank you for that, trustee Jefferson. Trustee Penfield.
Okay, back to the vote launch sign.
I love your eye hair.
Did you go down there and look at it?
I did.
And?
I think that we should have the signs somewhere facing the east of the lake, because of the signs, especially the ones, well, we'll have the first boulevard sign.
On the front, on the street, right.
Right, on the street.
That's on the street.
And then with the rules and regs, I think they should be where the car parking is, not where the, the truck parking. So it'd be facing maybe somewhere.
In the northeast corner, reaching outward.
Northeast corner, yeah.
Yeah, I thought the same thing, because it won't be blocking the view of the lake over near where those trees are, won't be blocking any view. And I spoke with Mike, I know he left, but, um, he really feels we should try with that particular setup to get compliance first, and then if that doesn't work, the other suggestion was perhaps a small sign like this, like we had under, we were going to put on the library sign that says boulevard parking movement, but really it's the compliance from the enforcement that we're really in. And I think they're ready to handle it, they're ready to go. So, so I would, we're in agreement, do you?
No.
All right, so I'll make a motion then, although we need to also improve on the library sign, right? Are you in agreement?
I told you did that.
Did we approve it though, or did we wait? I thought we waited a little.
We waited.
So, let's start, I'll make a motion then that we approve the two signs for the village vote launch, the one to be placed at the street level and the other to be placed in an appropriate place in the northeast corner of the vote launch, and that we order those, and if you remember, the cost of the street sign was nine eighty, and the cost of the other sign was eight forty-five. So it's sort of like eighteen hundred and twenty-five dollars.
And that money is covered by the grant.
Well, let's start with that one first.
Okay. Move by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Mertz, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, both by you, side of aye? Aye. Those opposed, go carry.
Okay. And, secondly, we have the issue of the library sign, I don't have a new cost on it, it was supposed to be a two-sided sign that says Dodge and Moore Library without the board underneath saying ours. And again, in keeping with the other signs to be ordered, so there will be some new ordering. What do you think?
Is money in the budget for that, uh, library budget?
Well, you were supposed to take it out of one of its accounts.
Yeah, yeah, we discussed that last meeting.
I mean, it wasn't budget at the beginning of the year.
Well, since it's winter, we could, we could wait, order everything new, on a new budget, wait for spring. They're not going to put it in till spring, right? So we can do that.
It's about a six-week turnaround time, I think they said, so.
Six weeks. Okay. We'll get it from our.
Can get a better price?
We'll get the family discount if we order three.
No, they gave them to us as a line item, so. Okay, so, will we, on the library sign, we'll get a better price without the board underneath, and then we'll wait until the spring?
Yep.
All right, okay. Um, the next item I have, Carol and I had put on the agenda as an executive session, but if there's no objection, I don't really think that we need to, is the discussion over the New York State Disability Insurance. And I know, uh, you all have a memo that came from Carol, she met with Andre LaBarge to review the insurance policies that we have. Andre made a suggestion that we go with this new company, First Rehab, which will save the village a considerable amount of money, and it also makes the benefit better for the, the individuals, so, um, if you look at that middle paragraph of Carol's memo, the savings to the village would be seventeen hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixteen cents per year, plus the amount of the fourth quarter, which would likely be about, if you, if you just sort of interpolate a little, it could be up to a thousand dollars. So, it could be quite a savings to the village, and it does offer a better benefit for the individuals, so. I would make a motion that we take Andre's suggestion, she says that, um, January first would be a good time, so I'll make a motion that we authorize Andre to make that change effective January first, from the Hartford insurance policy to First Rehab.
Second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Moore, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, both by you, side of aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carried.
And again, a thank you goes out to Andre for, um, her diligence and, and just in really keeping us informed with ways that we can offer a better benefit with, with less of the cost to the village, and she does a really good job of that, and, um, she certainly has had a lot to offer since we took her on as our insurance carrier. Uh, the last item that I have tonight is to request an executive session to discuss police personnel.
Second. Moved by trustee Penfield, seconded by trustee Jefferson, roll call, trustee Jefferson. Aye. Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Mertz.
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And John, did you want to discuss that water issue, or were you just walking?
Oh, Mr. Waterback?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We had calls again on Saturday, I know a few of us that had calls, um, from the boys that up on Smith Street with the heavy rains that we had on Friday, and I know, I, I spoke to her on the phone, but I think John and Brian didn't even see it. And Brian, are you also there to look at it?
Yeah.
She seemed to feel that her neighbor would be amenable to, to, wasn't that the question before about that issue having to cut across the back of someone else's property? And I guess her, of the houses that are affected, her house seems to be the worst, certainly looked it on Saturday, I know.
Yeah, we did, Brian and I went up and spoke with her, and actually, we went to the neighbor's house, Brian and.
Jamie, Jamie, what was his last name?
Right on the corner of Smith and.
Kavanaugh.
Kavanaugh. I think what's happened over the years is last year, he, not only did we have construction on that road, Kavanaugh, that raised up, and then he had, it's, uh, this lady, a man that boards, Mr. Waterback, he brought fill in, so actually, it makes hers depressed, lane is depressed almost, let's say almost a foot. So it's catching all the water, it's a catch.
This is, this issue has not been a, a new issue, it's been going on for several years. Well, I've asked, uh, our village engineer to look into that, uh, biggest problem we have there is, there's some recommendations that have been made, but we need to get easements, we just can't go on someone's property and put in a sewer line.
Well.
And we need an easement because once we put it in, we have to maintain it.
Well, I think, I don't know, that was the first time on Saturday when I was speaking with him on the phone, that I had heard that her neighbors were even open to that. I'm not sure where things were left, Brian, when we looked at it before.
It was an easement problem, again, a lot of paperwork to go through, if the village wants to supply.
Well, the other problem was, we spoke to wherever that gentleman was, and I'm not sure where it was, but he, he wasn't agreed that we could go on the property and get an easement to drain out during Mr. Waterback's property, as long as we received it and put his property back. And the other thing is, I think he, didn't he mention something about the storm sewer being moved? I think, yeah, I think he did, when, uh, somebody went in there, did the landscaping, and then actually moved the, maybe they tied it into the storm sewer and put a drain at a different location than the original.
What happened is, uh, when we had the property filled, they brought in truckloads of sand, and they took a bulldozer and they just flattened it out, and they filled the whole storm drain in with sand. So we had to dig it up and move it and put on village property, because it was on private property before, and then we put a very, you know, a, a soap fence around it, so it wouldn't fill up with sand, because it's just all loose sand and the water was washing right down the drain and flood our drains. So we put a soap fence around it to hold the sand back, and that's why the, the drain moved over.
Okay.
Because it was on private property, yeah.
I guess the biggest concern is that he had, well, then we put it back to what he has, he's seen the property, it's, it's nice house level, so, he said he'd give us an easement, I don't know how easy that, that is to do.
John, I think there's more to it than just that, because you go right down the street, you go right behind red lights, in the spring of the year, it's a lake back there, it's all.
Yeah, but you see what happened with Kavanaugh, the road is higher now.
I understand that, I understand.
I mean, that was taken care of her, but unless we just instead of, well, here's what you do, and if we, if there was dirt brought in and it made her, because what you have is a tier effect, Kavanaugh, Nattales is a little higher, then Mrs. Waterback, which is lower than the two, so hers gets tracked, and then if you brought hers up to the level of Nattales, then you'd be draining down to, eventually, if the drain was in the middle, it would hit the drain and go in, you know what I'm saying?
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, I'll show you some pictures I took two years ago behind red lights, the lake, it's a lake, there's that much water, and, and the, and the whole backyard is flooded. The problem exists when they put in the second street, they never put in the storm sewers. Now, I, it looks like we've got to live with this, this situation, not that I'm very happy about it, but we'd have to live with it. So, my suggestion is to get Doug up there again, come up with a definite plan how to fix this, and then get cost estimates.
I agree with you.
Here's, uh, something we may consider, instead of putting drains, since the properties are naturally flowing from, you know, it's a higher elevation, if we just, if it was just filled in, they would naturally flow, and if you put a drain in the middle of a property towards the street side, wouldn't the water just match up?
I don't know, I'm not new to here.
But if you brought up, ladies are, brought her lot up, then you'd have to bring up Nattales, it would be continuously up the road.
It'd be cheaper to dig it up and run.
Uh, no, you wouldn't have to, do Nattales is already higher than Waterback.
Yeah, but if you bring Waterback's up, it's going to make Nattales lower.
Well, I mean, no, we wouldn't go higher than Nattales, you'd, you'd be lower at Nattales, Mrs. Waterback, and then you, the slope would go, that's the ease.
John, I think.
But anyways, but let's look at it again.
Let's send Doug up there.
He definitely has a big.
And engineer it, and then get cost estimates.
Well, I think, yeah, and I think we need to make a list, we need to get easements, whose property we need to ease.
That's right.
We actually need to formalize the process, so it's not just Doug's going to go up, put a report together, and that's it.
Well, he will tell us that you, this is where it's got to go, this is what you're going to do.
Right, but I know he's also looked at it before.
Yeah.
And he may even have some paperwork he's already done on it, but I think if we put all those things together and get a good cost estimate, perhaps it's something that we could look at at budget time for next year.
They got a problem on the other street too, like you just said, they don't have a storm sewer.
What other street?
On, uh, call it Border Patrol Boulevard up on the end there.
That would be it.
That would be it, no. On the north side.
That street?
The whole backyard in between, between Smith Street and that, right up straight through, has been nothing but a mess for the last two years.
That's right, when you go and you go with Doug, first wants you, you may call, I'd like to see what his, uh, what his plans would be.
That it?
That's it.
Everybody's answered, that it?
Yeah.
That's it for you, okay, trustee Moore.
I got one thing. Uh, you still, Phil's got something waiting?
If you're going to do those two streets, you better look at Rock Avenue where those two new houses are going up, you have the same situation there. The houses on Stewart Street are lower, and the ones on Rock Street are, are being built up with fill, and I was there in the rain a couple weeks ago, and as those houses get built down that street, is the village going to continuously put in storm drains, or is this going to be the developer's responsibility at some point?
Good point. That's what I thought, we should go back to the developers, they put it in.
Maybe we need to talk to, uh, the guy.
Is there anything in the village code?
Yes, do you feel development, can we, can we?
If you can't drain up your neighbor?
No. Yeah, we went through that on, uh, on one side of, oh, a few years ago, we had drains up there, and we forced the, we forced the developer to put in drains. That's a good point, okay, get ahold of, have Doug, have Doug take a look at that, and get ahold of, uh.
Boyer?
Todd, Todd Boyer?
No, 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 no.
Very strongly?
No, 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 what I don't have to, Galio, sorry, yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, okay, we had trouble with lead and copper content in the pipe, so that, we started having to see quest in June, and we got some results back, and everything's perfect, it's below what we need, uh, they're going to be running more tests in two thousand and seven, if that passes, uh, we don't have to monitor it as much.
Great.
Well, that's it. I brought it.
That's it. Thank you, trustee Moore, trustee Mertz.
Uh, I see that I have on the agenda is a resolution for shared services with the town, but we're going to discuss that at a later date after we can. And the other thing is, I, um, I have to make a motion for the advanced, advanced life support operating authority, which I do have. I will organize. I'd like to make a motion to continue as an advanced life support agency with the village of Rousas Point Fire Department EMS as the operating authority.
Second.
And we're going to have, this will be done with a letter that will be sent when the fire comes in, that makes sure we don't have EMS help.
Just give that letter to me, Carol.
Right. What does that mean?
Over here, run DLS, we're Englishmen, still get them going.
Oh, and we have to renew?
We know what I have to do.
Oh, okay.
So I put that in the form of a motion, seconded by-
Moved by Trustee Berks, seconded by Trustee Moore. Any discussion? No discussion, all of us in favor, vote by you, side of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
You know, I don't have it on here, but I would like to request an executive session to discuss personnel.
That's on here.
It is?
It's on the supplement, discuss electrical personnel.
Another paper.
Another paper.
Document.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can get that supplement.
Check your box. Just got it, just got it tonight.
I'll second your motion if it wasn't already.
Moved by Trustee Berks, seconded by Trustee Penfield.
It's always a new bag of tricks when I go there.
Roll call, walk, Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Moore.
Aye.
Trustee Berks.
Aye.
The Mayor votes aye. That it, John?
Can I make a comment regarding public?
You can do anything you want.
About the Vietnam Veterans Park. And I think people should realize that, at least this is my feeling, having been a Vietnam era veteran and also a member of the board here, that we're not trying to take the park away. People should realize that maybe the paint is a little too extrusive. It's too large for the little park that we have. And maybe the park would be better served with a nice memorial flag or monument, and something that would be open to the public, so people could actually drive up there. We'd be, yes, we're thinking about putting a very small parking lot to the south side of the park, which would be bordering recourse property. South, it would run north, it would run west and east, or east and west. And the reason for that is there's not enough, won't be enough parking at the new village boat launch, because the boat launch is for the boaters. And if we start filling, and then we're having the lakefront development, we're going to have a walk, and hopefully people will come and use this walkway, and be able to park, you know, in designated areas for the specific use of using the walkway, which would be nice, where people could also go to the village park, which is just next to the veterans park. So, and then, who knows, maybe at some time, we may, even though we do have some on the, under the village rec center, there's an area for picnic and charcoal pits, that might be nice to have picnic tables along the lakeside and charcoal for day use, and people can park there. So with that great big tank picking up all this room, and I think maybe a lot of the legionnaires will be in agreement that maybe we can somehow dispose of it. And I'm not speaking for the legionnaires, but I think there is discussion, and hopefully we can come to some understanding that would be more valuable for everyone to use the park if there was parks that are more friendly use.
Just a couple of side comments on John.
Okay.
When we did the visioning of the village of Rousas Point back in 2002, I think it was, with the UAN Associates, and we had that whole day session at St. Patrick's Church Basement, where we had about a hundred people come in from the village and sit down. That was one of the comments that was made, very strongly, to do something about that park. I have sets brought that up to the American Legion. And at first, there was hesitation, but I think the legions is in agreement that they would like to see a park dedicated to all veterans in a decent memorial. I have told them that I would ask UAN Associates to give up their artist concept, and I think I could get Garrett, that is, to do that recharge. If an artist concept is what we want to look at, and then get the support of the veterans groups, the legions of the affiliate here in the village, and possibly build a nice memorial park down there. And like John said, to have tables and places where people can sit and enjoy it. I had a call today that if we're interested in getting rid of the tank and the gun, we don't, nobody wants it. And I don't want to say who, it just might at this point, but they're very, very interested. And one of the things, they said their village of veterans are parked on a fly pole. And they have put up four fly poles, one for each of the, four or five fly poles for the few sort of services, or Air Force, Navy, Marines, Coast Guard, Army, and American Flight. And if we built one down there, why not look in the future and move in that fly pole from the library to that park in the future? And I'm not saying, and put that as like the centerpiece of that park. You know, that's a possibility. Yes, it takes money. We all know that.
There's a time capsule there too, though, next to that fly pole.
Yeah, that's true too, but that's got nothing to do with veterans. We can leave that there.
Well, yes, but still, it's a consideration moving that fly-
Well, I'm just saying, it's an idea. It's an all idea, close. Anyway, that's, you know.
I'm nervous about the liability of the tank. When I see the kids jumping out here off of this sink and down here, boy, scares me. Somebody's going to break an ankle or break a leg, or bang your head, and that's the only thing that bothers me. I think we should have something for veterans.
I think those things bother. It's a small-
And we're not, we're not trying to take away what other boards have, I know we talked about the signs, but again, just to make clarification here, that was another thing that we brought up in the vision, and we're trying to make the signs standard. That's why the signs for the boat launch are going to look just like the signs, same design as the village signs. And we're trying to make that the standard from now on, so that everything, you know, kept neat and clean. Would, any other comments, John?
No.
Okay. Carol?
Nothing.
Iris Ann?
Oh, yes, maybe. Our Christmas parade of toys, it turned out, even though we had bad weather, and made a few changes, but we got probably about twenty, I would say twenty kids that showed up opposed to our normal.
Border reins.